Okay, so I am calling this meeting to order. It is May 8th. This is a regular meeting. Uh, do I have a motion to establish the agenda? All in favor of establishing the agenda as per subject, please say aye. Students?
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Uh, I should add you have Director Bari attending my Zoom, uh, meeting and uh, everyone. Um, okay. That's established. Uh, our first item is a partial governance process monitoring item. It is budgeting slash financial planning updated on certified certificate and classified FTE.
Great. Um, keeping with a series of updates I've been receiving that will all lead up until the budget document. Bringing forward for information and questions of both our certificate and classified budgetations for next year. I'll turn it over to Aaron Miller to give an overview and then we'll take questions and the comments.
You can do it from here.
You can do it from here.
Okay. Uh, I think the documents you'll see the board or line of looking at the last couple months about recollection. Uh, just sort of reminder that there's yeah, a couple, a couple factors. One resignation, maybe they'll fill those positions. Uh, also if certain levels get smaller in terms of numbers, you mentioned in the background. I think this is in line with what you've seen in terms of both certificate and classified, that they're gonna get a little smaller mix in terms of staff FTE. A couple highlighting things you'll notice the officer Kevanated the uh, the scheme of the decrease in librarians, we talked about before, but also the classified, the commensary increase in library, uh, assistant library staff. That's gonna be terrible in the way that you can talk about it. But other than that, nothing too surprising in terms of percentages of staff being different. Just uh, the percentages of almost every cell are just um, the same, just one year different, but a lot smaller, but only a couple years. So, nothing, nothing surprising, I don't think, based on what we talked about the last couple months. So, any further questions?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so, do we have a chart that shows how many times, uh, what is it, FTE, um, because not, everyone is the full FTE, because at least by understanding correctly, if I'm wrong, um, is that because benefits, uh, so paid to each, um, I, I've been certificating teacher over point four, point six, that actually like two point fives is more than a one point zero when it comes to compensation. Um, so do we have anything that sort of shows how many part-time teachers we have and how that compares?
Uh, I don't have to compare this to any of the other FTE. You're correct in the fact that, um, this, the FTE, the number of staff will be higher than the FTE. Because I just don't, I don't think that.
Because like, I mean, basically, I just want to show a headcount. Like, one would be everyone's full-time, then anything over that would like two would be like everyone's at full-time. Um, to understand how that looks like and then how.
Yeah, and um, I think just for clarification, what your, what Director Phillips is referring to, um, this is all the same thing. When the state went to the CEP, they created a formula, and on the classified side, there's a certain number of hours that a classified member must um, uh, meet each year to make their eligible benefits. And on the certified, it's not by hours, it's by FTE, um, so that's a change. Out there, and then what's the ratio of that?
Yeah, exactly. Because then the, the higher ratio that we have, that you're getting. Comparatively more expensive.
And, and it's a, um, it's a, it's a really nuanced and great inquiry, because it really then starts to getting to, um, there are some staff members who, they prefer to work, let's say, a point six. And they might, you know, they might be excellent staff members in here, and so, but by doing that, maybe costing more to be able to do that. And so then it becomes what's more important, that I'm, you know, staff member or what's that costing?
So, yeah. Yeah, certainly, certainly understand the trade-off. I'm just trying to understand, you know, we have worked from middle, you know, middle, or if we stay in one direction or the other because of the compensation.
And I don't know how to compare to other districts.
Well, I don't know how to compare to other districts. I mean, thank you, just for the certificate of staff for this year, so the twenty-four, twenty-five, the headcount's about two thirty-eight. In the, I can't remember, students, I'm gonna get the, um, what's that, two eight or, no, the, the two eighteen. Or this one right here.
Oh, that's.
But now that one, sure, so two thirty-eight over two eighteen would be a six, so one point zero. We can see there's comparisons out there, I'm not quite sure, but definitely more than one.
Still have some questions. My, my big takeaway from this, other than seeing the difference on member staffing, is that there's no, like, positive surprises from this, like, there's no, like, chump, like, oh, what's surprising is the form turn, you know, um, that it's coming out for, for the surprise rate, right?
Yeah, I, I think there was, um, really big surprises in the future, uh, you know, considering that I have this catalog, where it said, yeah, several retirements. Uh, and we, and we're, we feel like those positions are necessary, we're, do we, which of us retired at a, a one point oh and a retirement back report gave a point six or something? Those are some ways that they've been turned around, but I, I wasn't surprised by any of this in there, I would say. It aligns back with some of the conversations that I heard of the last couple of weeks.
I wanted to get, um, because it's a little bit, you know, maybe just a quick, um, snapshot into, you know, what we're starting to see for a whole, particularly kindergarten. Um, it is trending in a positive direction. We're already over seventy percent of projection, um, which is pretty consistent. Um, it could probably go better just from you. Uh, right now, we are projecting two hundred five and we're at one hundred forty-seven. Um, and so, right now, um, we're watching, Mr. Miller and I have been, um, having conversations along with, um, Mr. Daughtry and then the principals, but, you know, we're starting to fill up, uh, we're being, we're projecting, uh, we need to be. Um, the goal is almost not to have the most kindergarteners around, but, um, we're trending in the right direction. And, uh, all of our other variables are, um, right there at our foot, so I think we can hit our projections without any problem at this point for elementary.
I have another question. So this doesn't reflect, you know, any change, any of the focus?
Yes. Yeah, we go to the, um, this classified one.
I see.
Well, you'll see how old the cert are classified. You'll see a reduction of the cert.
That's the inverse of the second classified. Or. Where was I saying this? How?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, is anything like that?
Yeah, and there's essentially the whole, like, classified.
Can I ask the person that I'm recording? Yes, okay. So, um, it's not the case where, this is possible. It's not the case that, um, any absence or like, this is the recommendation or return of whatever will, and will in this plane rate is a week. Like, we need anything necessary, you know, someone's, someone's retired, but the role needs to be filled.
Yeah, so part of everything, sorry, I forgot about that. Um, so part of the, we will do that before we ever have a person who is available, or wants to work, so there are reductions in the system that parts have to ensure necessarily. And these, um, risks, uh, that they're chosen not to pass by some of those, or continue review, take the work to do, do X, Y, or Z, for whatever reason, they take anything. Uh, and then each position has been available, be valued, whether or not we have a leave, we'll fill that. And we need to provide advice, uh, speaking back on.
Right, so, but, so if I'm hearing, I need to know first, that, like, oh, this teacher retires. Um, we're not gonna have this class anymore. That's not the case, because if the class has to end, then we'll have a class.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna hire somebody here to teach that class, or we decide something, especially if you're.
Okay, that's, I'm trying to get you started, I've reset a little bit.
In case you point, um, I think, I think we have a recommendation, you're saying, uh, for that issue.
We know, like, what the average number of, um, sort of knock-on domino effect is because of bumping, when a position's. For instance, take the librarian. Just when people come, like, if they're certificated in a subject matter, even if they haven't taught that subject matter for a long time. If they have seniority, they would then could exercise that right, displace that teacher, who then could exercise a similar right down the line. Of the person with the least experience, um, who's receiving the lowest compensation, gets displaced. Um, so what we know is generally, when a position is eliminated, if there are one bump, two bumps, three bumps, where each position is eliminated. What is the, the total effect? Because that in itself is extraordinarily, is what the, really what the teacher haven't taught in subject matter for a number of years.
And it's variable, so the, um, it depends, it varies year on year on what endorsement there is, and the people who are being traditionally impacted, so for people who get all their bearings, it's true. They have varied endorsement, because some may be endorsing social studies, or English, or elementary education, um, some may only provide a library. So that's sort of the big case where they, you know, the big case whether or not they're really the best, the important. And this particular grant is actually not as much of a means as it is historically, um, or has been announced, and that is. Uh, limited positions, uh, limited certificate position, which can be, can absorb, uh, the impacted librarian, the certificate staff members. So a limited position is a position to help a person this year, uh, for somebody who is only, they always have to be in balance. So, the number of limited FTE has to equal the number of, um, FTE that they can have on the. And so, because of that, we have limited positions that, that endorsements aligned with some of our, um, with the people who are being impacted by a red. Those positions were being eliminated, eliminated, so they were able to move. That doesn't mean there's not any impact, but it's just, these limited staff have a right to unemployment enforcement, so we have teachers who have been in our system this year who only had a one-year assignment for not going to be able to move back, because someone who has a right to continue contract was, uh, their position was eliminated.
Those that, those, those that are, um, limited assignment, like, do you give your authority for them?
No, you don't.
Yeah, so they're like, so yeah, so like, it's my question, it's like, for, for those that have, is for them, let's say it's eight. Does that result in eight bumps, sixteen bumps, thirty-two bumps, zero bumps?
Again, again, it's variable. In this particular situation, I think that there are bumps, um, to the new staff, because we're able to access permitted. So very few, I think, in the, uh, we, or less.
I would say you could, you could, you know.
Yes, you know, whereas I think it could have been the reduction of the Spanish program, or significantly more than that.
Yeah, and that was, that was around, it's two, I think, two thousand, maybe, because when we are significant, um, I guess there were lots of bumps, we did not see that this time.
I just wanted to provide the answers to where the, I'm just, I'm just remembering, we see that on a classified sheet, it's number twenty-six, call. It's just not super visible, like, to the, the ARI, because it's, we were at four point two for twenty-three to twenty-four, so a year, and then this year, we were at five point four-four, and then it just went back down to four point three, but, right? We're just only just asking what it was. Dom said that that's because the, um, twenty-five, twenty-six positions are more fractional, so it doesn't, it, it's not, it, it's not. Look at it, you're like, oh, we were from like, you know, five and a half people to like, four and a half, four, three people, but it's actually a lot more.
It's just classified, unlike a full-time cert, which is one, classified a full-time would be hundred and eighty-three days, um, six and a half hours a day, that's still not even more FTE because of the window that hours will work on that, so that's why we're seeing that. And we're trying to also project, um, how many of these might be the health room assistants versus nurses. Um, Sally, our MIDE president, and I are working right now, we have a newsletter for the community yesterday. Um, we're working with the group of nurses, administrators, and others, sort of really looked at that model, and, yeah, I don't, as I recorded last night. I don't think that the changes are gonna be as significant as what's in the draft resolution, but again, that's just capacity, but, um, we're looking at.
Um, apparently, there's problems with the audio, like, people aren't handling it well, or a bunch of problems, so the operator's asked for a full-minute recess so that he can reset the owl, which should solve the problem. So, I'm gonna suggest that we can take like a three-minute recess until five twenty to reset the owl. That's what we're thinking. Now, I don't, we need to, that is, is the first step. Enjoy yourself.
Test, 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 test. Deborah, does that sound any better?
It does sound better.
Okay, that's the microphone on the laptop. I just wanted to test that to make sure it wasn't a setting there, and I'm just going back to. Owl, owl, now, is that?
I think that's a, how is that owl, Deborah?
Much, much better, yeah.
Positions and issues and.
Yeah, it's much, much clearer. It was garbled, like, cutting in and out before, and now it's not. Oh, yeah, there's, there's too much background noise. Now try.
Okay, you're starting your testing. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Is it better?
It's better, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Lucy and Ava.
Hey, we are back in second. Um, thanks everyone. I think our audio problem is, is not resolved, but we can improve, audio situation is improving. Um, so, we're back to the, the, um, update on FTE. I don't know how much more discussion we want to have about it, I feel like, I don't want to.
But just a reminder, it's not static, so when you see it again in May or towards the end of this month, it will probably have adjusted because of that, but it gives you an idea.
Well, not only is it, next year's not static, but this year, we even, we're even changing people, now for this year, we're still hiring staff to, we need the different needs of students, so there have been some additions recently.
When we hear about it in May, will we, will it be shown, like, by how much it's gone number down, like, because I, I don't see that personally, just like, when, when we do get the update?
For, for next year or?
Yeah, sure, yeah. Thank you. Anybody else?
Maybe it might be something to put on when we monitor, um, employment, but I think at some point it'd be useful to sort of see, uh, how FTE and, and staff breaks down by experience levels. The sort of understanding, like, if we're, you know, if we have a problem with, like, teachers that are gonna be retiring soon, and not enough young teachers, you know, that are in, like, you know, like, or are evenly distributed. Um, I mean, I think just sort of an analysis and a look, like, where we sit with respect to that would be helpful.
I think that'd be really interesting, actually, to look at. Yeah, yeah. Let's talk about the study session.
There's a few different ways that we can do that, work our heads together, um, because there's longevity, there's the scattergrams, we'll put our heads together, come up with some ideas on that. And, um, uh, come back, you may with some ideas. You have two different study sessions coming up in the next six, seven weeks, so I think we can easily do something.
Make it fit with a, um, budgeting study session, maybe?
Yep.
If there's time.
Yeah.
Students, any questions?
Okay, uh, this is not an action item, so we will move on to Board Policy one thousand and three, or Job Description, Draft Board Policy and Procedure on Limiting Immigration Enforcement in Schools.
Um, this is, we broke the, um, policy into a policy and procedure. We decided that, um, given the significance of it, and I do have a resolution to make this a board policy, not an administrative policy, so we'll see it as a BP. Um, the board policy was designed, um, and really, um, we took a lot of the language from, uh, what we think Wazda was trying to do, and then Aaron started working on it. And really came up with, what are we trying to say in our policy, and then what are all the procedural things that have to follow? Um, something that you'll note, um, and then I'll kick it over to you all, um, two things. One is, Director Martinez sent some thoughts that are in the, um, board doc shell, and so if you're not in one of the documents, but if you go back to the board doc shell, um, we, uh,
Wait, what do you mean?
Um, sorry, into, um, yeah. Into this right here. So we, I added in, um, a section that says Director Martinez will be joining us. We thought she'd be by video for this part, but she's in person. Um, and so she had some thoughts here, and then I wanted to bring to your attention one aspect of your resolution that we're having, um, a little challenge meeting based on some state problems that we're running into, but that can come after this discussion.
And I think, do you want to, like, kind of present to us? Uh, so, it's, uh, well-written there. So, I, I, it was just that, uh, the language was very limited to special, specific type of visa. And, um, and I will say that, that it is so, people migrate to the US in such variety ways, that it, it did not reflect where, um, how, it would not represent well ours to, who we want, who we try to protect, so, uh, it just to either change the language, I put two options. One is to add an attachment and refer to the official US visa, uh, the official government site on the type of visas, which, or just avoid any specific visas and refer to, um, the, the legal, the, what is, there was a case of the employer against Doe that, that used legal protection to every single, uh, student to access public education regardless of their immigration status period. So it is without naming any visas, and I, I would definitely, I, I think that the second might, might be broader in, in, but, um, but it's, it's one or the other. I, I do believe that limiting to just, I mean, those three will leave so many people behind, like, um, out of this policy.
Um, sort of, I guess, is like, uh, I mean, just sort of a drafting mechanical question. Is it necessary to include the defined terms visa, because it doesn't look like they're otherwise used in the document? So rather than creating perhaps, like, ambiguity, like, where it's not necessary, can we just delete the visa references?
Is that in the, in the definitions, in the procedure, fourth bullet? Is that what you mean?
Yes, well, so, yeah, looking at the definitions, I hear there's F1 visa, and then J1 visa, like, but those are defined terms, but then looking, like, where does it actually, like, the defined terms, like, hit the road? Like, I mean, are we using the defined terms, right? Like, if we're not using the defined terms, like, why are we defining the terms?
I, I actually really agree with that. I just think it's gonna make it a hard policy to, to maintain and keep up to date for future boards, like, at a time when maybe this is an issue that is more on the back burner. It's, um, it's better to have a, a policy that, like, just makes it very simple, and then we just can enforce that. Yeah, I would agree with.
So, Aaron, if we go with the second option from what Director Martinez is saying, then does that allow us to be able to pull that language out, in your opinion, or what are your thoughts?
Yeah, so the purpose is, I understand it, um, because the J1 visa, M1 visa, and, um, the F1 visa, those were included in the model policy. And my understanding of why is because those are specific visas that relate to education, or more like, so it is to draw attention to people who may have that come up, specific to exchanges, that type of thing, through this policy, um, was really why it existed, to your point, Director Glow, is I don't believe they're usually here in the policy, which I similarly have struggle points with including, um, a definition term that is not otherwise utilized. But it's my understanding, that's why they did it, to ensure that those who would be searching our board docs and looking at coming here, or facilitating a student coming here as part of an educational program, that they be directed towards this policy and its procedure. So that's why it existed, more for the utility of people looking for things, rather than, so they know to come here. Um, because sometimes people may not see, uh, exchange student-type events as immigration, even though it falls within the larger scope of immigration, um, because they're not necessarily coming to, to live here on an extended term, they say more part of an educational process. So, I think there's no problem in eliminating it, that's just the why, as I understand it, because I did try to find out why those were in there, and so since there was an interest in being as encompassing as possible, as at least that was my understanding from the board, I, it was left, um, for consideration. I would lean more towards eliminating any specific reference than to try to delineate all the different kinds of reference, because, all the different options. Because A, that'd be difficult to maintain, B, I wouldn't, uh, yeah, I think just maybe maintenance is, would be challenging.
Yeah.
Um, otherwise, you know, I think it's a good policy, I like it, if, you know, basically clarifies that absent, you know, a court order or a legal requirement, that we allow entrance, you know, or access to our data, that we're not sharing that information, um, or access, uh, so I think it's good. I think, you know, the one thing to just put on people's, like, mind is, like, there is the questions that I've received of, of, does this perhaps, you know, put federal funding, you know, at risk? Like, I think that's early and presumptive to say, uh, in our district, it's, it's less. Um, I think if we're to live our values, we need to stand up for certain things, um, and then if it does actually put funding at place, figure out, like, how that should be borne, whether it's reopening contractual negotiations with MIDEA, um, or cuts. Um, but I think it's getting ahead of ourselves to be complacent and to capitulate, um, before those decisions are being made, other than to, uh, you know, be forward-looking. before those decisions are being made, other than to, you know, be forward-looking in terms of what might be required of sacrifices across the board if we were to lose funding for standing up for our values.
I just want to. With the point that it is extremely important to live our values as a district, and one of our explicit values is, you know, the diversity and the respecting of the students. And I think that, you know, it's very important not to capitulate in grades. And I appreciate all the work that Christina and Dan have done on this. I think it's a vital document, especially at these times. And I, I think they're showing the kind of protective foresight that is important right now. I see both of you students. I just want to say, if people think it's important to mention, like, exchange students as kind of one category of student that would be protected, then that is maybe something we could just mention in the text without getting into the, you know, J1, J2, or whatever.
I just, I just agree with both of you too. I think this is incredibly important right now. I think it's super important for school to be a place for people feel really safe and feel like they can, they'll be protected. And having that assurance for students, I think, will really help them, especially at a time where they might not feel like they have that. So feeling that there's, like, for our students who are in our school is protecting, I think, is just so important right now. And so I really appreciate this document. I think it'll help ease a lot of minds.
Yeah, and then in regards to, like, the naming the visa, I think, like, specific ones, yeah, like outlining that it's for exchange students, works and, and then also version, like, including but not limited to, and then like linking the government website would be an option.
So updating.
Yeah, Deborah first online and then.
Deborah, please, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. And I, and I think what's important, it's not only, it is living our values, but it's also living our values that we abide by the rule of law. And right now, the law is that people with legal status, under whatever visa, are entitled to be here and receive free and public education. And if that, if a court determines otherwise, that they're not legally allowed to be here, that's between them and the court, not the school district. So into, like, I think it goes farther that we're, we're supporting the rule of law and that, and as Dan said, if that changes and if that changes, then we'll deal with it and make determinations in a responsible way. But as of right now, this document indicates that we're following the rule of law. And, and I think that's really important. I agree, I think it was Ava just said, in terms of like listing, like, I think having an addendum or an appendix with the types of visas is useful. I don't think it needs to be in the policy, but it could be attached to the policy to say, at least as of the time of this writing, or as of this date, these, you know, visas fall under it. And I think that is important, because in looking at this list, it indicates that it's inclusive and that, look at all these types of statuses can be here. So I think, I think having that exhaustive list in a place where there's definitions just demonstrate the inclusive nature of this policy.
Thank you. Fred?
Just a note probably for, for Nova and Aaron. I think we should flag the, so we have an international student exchange policy, it's 3142. It lists some of these visas. Let's check with Jamie on what, whether we should or shouldn't go in that direction with even a statement in this, just to see how many people would even go to this versus our other policy. Because that might solve the answer anyway.
I'm just going to mention that it is, when you were talking about naming the visas, not only the visas, I think that all the status, that includes permanent residence or refugees, TDS, those terms also matter. So it can be added to the attachment and not only can it live with the visas, it's, everybody is allowed, as long as you live here.
I actually look a lot for reading that exhaustive list.
I worry, I know so many people in Virgil and they have a different type of visas.
Yeah, I agree.
I'll link one for each.
But you still want to lean towards option two with a link to where they are, or no?
A link to or an attachment?
Or an attachment.
I'm good with number two, but if, if it will clarify to the commiserant, we're including all of this, that we are thinking about them, that's totally fine. We can be an attachment with that link. And it's also itself.
Updating.
Updating.
But that way, it makes it easier in the future to update, rather than updating the whole policy, just updating the stat, you know, the different statuses and their definitions.
Aaron? Well, I, if, is the, is the concept that we are maintaining a list that is updated, we being, whereas around the school district, I just wanted clarification.
Like, well, I was thinking, like, maybe it was, if this list is contained somewhere online, it's just a link, you know, and then, you know, as of, and then as of, you know, just like a blue book.
Because for this supplier VDO and the various legal protections actually cited in the policy itself as legal references, so you do have reference to what would be the legal protections. But when you said they, a separate piece, if it's an external source on some government page, that is fine. That makes more sense. I just don't want, immigration law is not necessarily my area of expertise or other people within the school district. So I would be loathe to try to make a comprehensive list that is not.
I think Christina's point is to, to make sure that someone can get easily within a quarter to, to the definition, to the other types of, not just visas, but like, you know, green card holders, you know, refugees, blah, 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 asylumes, is that what you would like? Like, so that could be like two links, you know, as opposed to just one link, something like that. It doesn't mean that we have to create our own document about it. So, okay, great.
But I, I will say that having some, getting some advice from an immigration lawyer might also help on the clarification of the language, if that will help to ensure that we're compliant and we are covering every single people that we're.
I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to do that, because I think, like, this is, this is a document about, like, what the district is going to do, like, what the policy is that the board is setting. So I don't think we're neutral. Turkey, immigration law, or something. Okay, so then this will come back to us, right, with?
Yeah, on the 22nd.
Revised, yeah. Okay, sounds good.
So on the resolution piece, if I, if this is a good time for, I can do it during my report. In the resolution that was passed, there is a, I gotta find the original. On the second kind of side of it is, be it further resolved in its continued commitment to the protection of student privacy, the district shall review its record-keeping policies and practices with respect to students' immigration status or place of birth. And then it says, then there's a semicolon, says, and cease any future collection. In the, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring this up. In my redline version that I had put in there, I had kind of chopped it off at the place of birth, and then I, I just didn't catch that it was added back in. And the reason why it's a challenge is, and I don't think we're the only state or district flagging this, because we exchanged Giovanna Koszewski, our student records coordinator, has been in contact with OSPI on this, and they're, they're looking at ways to change it. But right now, they, the state is asking to still collect the place of birth, mainly for Title III reasons, for, for access to Title III funding. It's not reported out at an individual level. It's reported out as an aggregate. But it is one thing that we don't have a workaround right now for collecting on the, on the place of birth. The policy will cover why we would never release that information. But that's the one section of the, of the resolution that we just can't quite figure out.
Could we? Sorry. So could, would a fix be to then say, we're going to continue collecting this information until, you know, until further directed by OSPI or something? Like, sort of to reflect the idea that they are also looking at this issue? Or what's the fix that would be best for us?
If it was even, and instead of being so definitive of, cease any future collection, and continue to explore ways to eliminate future collections or something, that would give me enough.
Or something to the, you know, something to the extent of, you know, cease, you know, to the extent permitted by law. But I think having the language in there, what is useful, because, I mean, we can tweak and figure out how to make, you know, the resolution compatible with what we're doing. But it's at least flushed out, I think, for, you know, a future board and advocacy. To begin thinking of, like, at the state level, if there should be perhaps reforms in the data that's being collected to be protective of all our students, if it's not necessary. And if at least at the state level, those fights are already being fought, you know, you may as well make it pragmatic.
That sounds like, something like that, cease to the extent permitted by law.
I'll bring back an amended language for that, for you then to just take action on at the next meeting. I can put it on consent, or we can have, but, and Tim would be.
Consent is fine, yeah.
Okay. And then I will also, as we keep track of these things, I will say that even the exercise that we went through, Michelle, Giovanna, myself, Nova, Jamie, others weighing in, was really useful. And I think exercised that, you know, reviewing our policies and our procedures and what's the record retention law on some of the things, and where can we get rid of or shred? And so it was really useful, so appreciate that.
I would say, let's put on the consent agenda that everyone make sure to keep at it, you know, off the consent agenda, so that if anyone has any quibbles about it, then they can pull it from the consent agenda.
Discussion definitely, great.
Thank you.
Sounds like fun. All right. This may be good. Not gonna jinx us. Okay, word policy 1002, governing style, level one. This is our 90-day re-monitoring. Of, sorry, this is, let me say that in English. This is our 90-day re-monitoring that we set for ourselves about governance. And so the way we've decided to, to, we have decided to do this, and also the next item is to give everyone, I don't think they're going to need it, but I'm going to give everyone two minutes to just comment. And let's, let's all look at the, at the policy, at the monitoring report. Everyone can have two minutes to say whether they think we are doing better over the last 90 days, whether they think we are in compliance, whether they think we are not in compliance. And then if they want, everyone can have one minute in a second round of comments. But again, I don't know that everyone's going to be needing that. So take a moment to look at the monitoring report.
And do you want comments for just the ones that we were, that you found yourself not in compliance? Or can it be on the whole thing? How do you want?
I mean, I'm going to assume we're not, my impression is that we're not suddenly out of compliance with anything that we were previously in compliance on. So for me, I'm only going to be commenting on things where we found ourselves out of compliance. But of course, anyone's free to comment on anything they like. So you want to look at the signed monitoring report, because that shows the things where we found ourselves not in compliance. Do we want to just go down the line with this? You want to start, and then we'll go to, like, we'll go down the line, and then we'll go to Deborah on the screen, and then we'll finish. And the students. Look, boop, 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 hop to the screen, and then wrap it up. Okay? I do not need my whole two minutes. I, I do think that we're not in compliance, and I do think that we are in some ways doing better. And, and I think the best of it just falls to personal reflection and, and personal, individual board efforts. And I'm trying my best, and I'm encouraging other board members to also try their best to be our best selves, to represent our community and our schools and our students as best we can, to do the important business of the district.
Thank you.
This sort of reminds me of the ad, if things will continue until we're out. No, but in all seriousness, I mean, it's heartening to see that we can come together on something, you know, important policies, like immigration policy, facilities naming policy. At the same time, it's disappointing that the room for discussion and disagreement on other issues, whether it's the wisdom of permanent open enrollment to stabilize enrollment or individual district accountability for the budget and ramifications on cuts in curriculum, cannot be had without, I think, distractions, saying that they're somehow personal attacks or disrespectful or undermining authority. These are just discussions. We should have discussions. We're adults. Let's focus on issues and facts and policies and programs and plans, and not on personalities and not on distractions.
I will echo both, and now we're getting very compliant, just in persons. We're living it.
Yes.
So that's it. That's it. Love my comments.
I agree that, like, the board's making the baby steps, and I feel like it's not going to be like an instant fix to, like, suddenly have, like, a perfect every meeting and, yeah. But I think, like, the board is working on, like, focusing on the issues versus just, like, yeah, like, the personal things.
Yeah, I agree with Ava. I think for me, it's heartening to see that the board is really focusing on students still, even though some of their, there has been issues with, like, disagreements, like, revving, with, like, looking at each other with, like, civility. I think that's still something that the board needs to continue to work on. Like, being able to disagree in a, like, productive and respectful manner, I think, still needs to be worked on. But I think for me, it is heartening that the board, it's not hindering the board's ability to focus on students and make progress.
Deborah?
I agree that I don't think we're there. I appreciate what was said about focusing on issues. The problem is that it's not the issues. And, and I think that healthy difference in perspective is really important and gets us to the best place. But there are still incidents of when governance policy is not, when policy governance is not followed, that's when, those are where the disagreements fall, not on whether or not there's disagreement on issues. When there's lack of respect for board decisions, then, then it leads to chaos. And we need to have healthy discussions that bring up a variety of perspectives, because that makes us better. But it needs to be done in the appropriate way. And then once a decision's made, that needs to be respected. And not just respected, but, but actually broadcast that this is the board decision, and we're not there.
Thank you. I have to tell myself too. I do agree that we're not there yet, but I do think that we have improved. I think the last 90 days in particular, we have been, in most respects, kind of like, as Ava says, taking baby steps towards improved civility, among other things. And so that's, so I would say improved, but not, not there yet. Does anyone want to go another round and make another minute? Yes. No. Okay, that's that. That's our finding. Should we set ourselves for another 90-day checking? What, that goes right into the middle of summer, right?
Yeah, because you are re-monitoring.
Yeah.
On those three, you do need to vote on that.
Right, okay.
And so, because it's a full re-monitor.
Okay.
So, and that would be just items two, three, and four.
Okay, so can I get a motion? Motion to find us continued not in compliance on two, three, and four. Is that right? Yeah. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of finding us continued out of compliance with numbers two, three, and four on this monitoring report, please say aye. Students?
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's two, zero, five, zero. Okay, so now, do we set?
Now you can, you can decide, you can, if you want. There's nothing in policies that says you have to re-monitor again, but you can.
I mean.
I propose that we re-monitor, because I think that we have to, our goal is to win Board of the Year. So in my, my first four years, so, so by holding us accountable, we can make effort to keep looking forward to this. So I don't know if 90 days, it's maybe all the summer, but maybe.
So 90 days is actually, this is to August, so, sorry, to July 31st.
Around 20 days.
Yeah.
You have re-monitoring on some policies from last time as well, which had similarities to these, as you all pointed out.
Yeah.
Then you talked about an August date for that, and so we could just put all four together in August if we might.
That would make a lot of sense. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's fine, but I mean, let's judge ourselves on results, like, not whether we're having brunch with one another. I mean, you know, I, I think we just passed, or will pass soon, a comprehensive and well-thought-out immigration policy. Like, in my view, that's something that, a lot. Like in my view, that's something that along with perhaps tackling other issues would be justification for Board of the Year, not because we all hold hands and, you know, think each other are like the best, like, you know, we wanna be lifelong friends with them. I mean, but yeah, we can, we can re-monitor.
I mean, it's pretty specific, like we are in and out of compliance with it. Does, I don't see an item here that's like, are we fully, yes, and, you know, same, but, but. So let's just set it for August, let's just push them all to August unless we suddenly find ourselves in compliance on the other ones. Okay, that's a plan. And then moving on to the next one, which is our board job description, 90-day re-monitoring. This one is also gonna require a move. This is the one where we found ourselves out of compliance with just two items. Developing written governing policies that address values, visions, vision, mission, and fundamentals, operational expectations, governance processes, why do we find ourselves out of compliance with?
I think it was your governance process. And operational expectations constraints on executive authority is what your conversation was generally around. And then board superintendent relationships.
Yes.
That's where your, that's where your.
So, so I see that in number six. It's just that number four has to developing written governance policies that address these topics.
Yep, and then, so I think it's the sub, the A, B, C, D is also with, all with four. So that's where your conversation centered around was there. And then six.
Yeah.
There.
No, I totally, I totally get it and I, and I know what the issues are very, very well. But I'm just wondering like why we found ourselves out of compliance on specifically developing written policies? Like, that like, it seems like we are developing written policies on these items. I would actually propose that we aren't in compliance with number four, but just it's number six that we're struggling with. Does anyone else have?
Do you wanna do the same?
Oh yeah, sorry, you wanna do the same thing? Do you wanna go first? Yeah.
I mean, I think that some members of our board are not in compliance with the governance model that we recruit to, you know, that we've adapted as a board. So I, I would find us continued to not in compliance in that.
I continue to believe that opposing policies and administrate in exercising oversight is, you know, as I would expect of an elected official, is completely in compliance and that it's problematic that others on the board do not see things the same way.
Christina?
I will let Deborah talk and the students first.
Sorry, students.
Um, I feel like the board should work on having like broader minds, like open, more open minds to each other's ideas regarding like all of these. So I don't, I, I feel like there's more progress to do.
Yeah, I think I, I agree with Ava, I think the board needs to do a better job at just discussing and understanding each other and being able to have productive competition.
Deborah?
I, I think the comments that were just made are very clear. Until Director Glowitz is willing to abide by policy governance in the way that it's written, was adopted, or is changed by a majority vote of the board, we're never gonna be in compliance as a board.
Okay, thank you. All right, I retract my question about number four. I don't think we're any closer to being in compliance on this one, so. It's an emergence, emerging skill, as they say in kindergarten.
I'm not directing.
Anybody?
As a board.
Run another round?
I would say that it's, we're making baby steps.
Yeah.
But we're not there yet. So we can add that to the August.
Yeah.
Portion of this.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to find that we are not in compliance on four and six.
Seconded, okay. All in favor of finding the board is still not in compliance with this monitoring report on numbers four and six, please say aye, students?
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, all opposed?
Sorry.
And anyone abstaining?
No.
Okay, so that's two, zero, four ayes and one nay. Thank you. Okay. Well, this is an excellent time to take a five-minute break, because we have recognition and public input starting at 6 o'clock. We're gonna have our drill team state champions coming in, it sounds like. So let's take five minutes and let everyone get in and get situated. Thank you all. Welcome, our drill team. Fred, you wanna do yours?
Sure. This is a little bit of a long time coming, uh, because it happened a little bit ago, but it is fantastic to have our MIHS Drill Team who brought home the state championship for the first time in our school's history. But it is really important, sure, let's go. Something that you need to know about this is that it's really three state championships all into one state championship. And I know though, that, you know, the, the big one is the one you're after, but I immediately emailed your coaches after they had sent out the news and said like, is it pretty normal that, like, you win all three, like, is that what you have to do? And it sounds like that's pretty rare, that a team would win in all three categories. So what we wanted to do was show your POM routine. So we're gonna put that up on the big screens here, for everyone to be able to see your POM routine. And then once that's done, we're gonna have you introduce yourselves, give us, you know, your name, what year you are, and especially for seniors, talking perhaps a little bit about the team experience. And then we'll certainly turn it over to Coach Mosler and Coach Baird to say a few words as well. So let's turn it over to the screen, let's take a look at it. One of three.
Yeah.
Now to you, you're like, oh, that's what I need, that, that's what I need. I shouldn't have done that, it was real like, wow, I'm exhausted halfway through. So student athletes, we'll start down here, help you, and we'll work our way around.
Yeah, my name's Kanelle B, I'm a senior. And really quickly, just, I wanna say, I mean, this team is incredible and we've worked so incredibly hard this year, working on things like technique and so many different skills. If you had told me my freshman year that I would be winning state, my senior year, I would not believe you. And it was just, it's such a crazy process and I'm so proud of everything that we've been working on. And yeah, this state championship really means a lot, all three of them, so really proud of this team.
I'm Tia, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Riley, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Carolina, I'm also a sophomore.
I'm Sifi, and I'm also a sophomore.
I'm Maya, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Taka, I'm a junior.
I'm Julie, and I'm a junior.
I'm Bella, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Ellen, I'm a freshman.
I'm Kimmy, and I'm a junior.
I'm Juliette, I'm a junior.
I'm Sadie, I'm a senior, and we work super hard for this, so super nice to see our little tail.
I'm Kira, I'm a junior.
I'm Bryn, I'm a freshman.
I'm Isabella, I'm a senior, and just watching the team grow throughout the four years, making so many good friendships has definitely been really special to me.
I'm Alara, I'm a junior.
I didn't know I was a sophomore.
I'm Emma, I'm a freshman.
I'm Roka, I'm a junior.
I'm Shirley, I'm also a junior.
Pretty young team, coaches. Must be pretty excited about that, but I know the seniors, you know, your leadership all the way through the year and all the way back to when you were freshmen and, and, you know, I know that means a lot, you know, to the other students, so, coaches.
I think I had a couple of students who still wanted to be.
Great.
Eunice, you wanna go first?
Oh, yeah. I just want to say that drill is quite an intense sport and it's year-round. We start practicing in the summer and then we continue practicing throughout the year, early morning, even weekends sometimes. And I think it can be very hard sometimes, but we had our amazing coaches supporting us and leading us through. And I think everyone was willing to come together and just work it through. And I think our hard work really paid off. Yeah, so I'm super, super proud of the team and I'm really excited for what more we can accomplish together.
Emily?
Um, I just wanna say I'm super, super proud of this team. As a freshman, this was such an amazing year and like we were so good to see our growth. I feel like something about drill is like, I feel like we really show like our persistence and grit, because like every, while we have practices three times a week and we all have to make a round five, and that definitely takes like passion and determination. But I'm just super, super proud and it's, I feel like it was so nice and like being able to like see our three championships reflect like what we did throughout the year.
Kira?
Um, yeah, I think something that was super special about this state championship is that the Mercer Island Drill Team like has never won state before. So for us to, like, we're at the awards and they're announcing third place and we don't hear our names. We're like, okay, maybe second, but like, maybe not. And then we hear second place, it's not our name, we're like, half of it is, oh, it's probably not us. Like, it's okay, we, we spent so much time working on it and like we put our all in, so it's okay. But then the other half is like, maybe there's a chance that we got first. And when we heard our name for first place, it was just like the best feeling ever. And to hear that three times in a row was kind of insane, so it was just, yeah. That was really cool.
I, I just wanna say congratulations and building on like the early mornings, it's just something new to me. I didn't realize that like, you know, you, you girls like started at 5:00 AM for early morning practice.
5:00 AM for early morning practices, but as a former rower, I can identify, it's occasional, at least for me, it was occasional, early morning practices generally in the afternoon, but it's tremendous in terms of the grit and determination, particularly when it's early mornings in the winter, and it's dark out, it's character building, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I also wanna say, I'm a former dancer myself, and I've always watched TV shows in which there's like, high school students dancing, doing drill, or like, watching play, for example, and I was like, okay, obviously those people are all in their twenties, and high school students just don't move that professionally, and having now seen you, I can say that is just not true. You guys look not just professional, but ultra-professional, like, award-winning professional, and I'm really proud of you, so.
Thank you.
I've gotta be a little schooler until they're gonna go home and do the lecture. Anybody else?
I think the thing that struck me while in your performance is, is the athleticism that goes into it, you don't, I think the layperson who maybe doesn't follow the drill team, or the teams that, you know, it's, we don't have a full comprehension of just how much like athletic training and athletic ability that you show, and I think it's just, again, so impressive, and to take all three top spots, I mean, you know, leave some for the other teams, but not, you know, anything soon.
I was just saying that I'm off all of your performance, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm very proud.
And you guys are also like, students outside of practice, so congrats, like, being a student and like, juggling that with like, being an athlete. Thanks.
Kyle, you wanna, or, to coaches?
Yeah, um, everyone's really reiterated all the points that I think are so crucial to know, which is that as coaches, we're looking for athletes amongst many other things, they need to be athletic, but they also need to be coordinated, they also need to be responsible. It's incredibly difficult to practice three, sometimes four days a week before school. During competition season, we take their Saturday mornings away from them, it is a huge commitment, and it doesn't stop after they compete. We're still practicing now and prep for our senior assembly, starting next week we are, and then we have summer practices, which are five days a week, starting at 7:00 AM. The dedication it takes, and the perseverance it takes to be a part of this sport, is unlike anything else that I've seen, and having been here for the past six years, and really grew the program from my current seniors freshman year, when there were only sixteen of them, and having to grow it to twenty-four, and then growing a middle school program to just build this pipeline into this amazing epic program that has started from all of you guys, you know, it's your hard work every single day that has made this possible, and you absolutely earned it. Eunice?
Yeah, I just wanna say, like, as a, as a former member of this team myself, I really look forward to the days when you guys kind of recognize and realize the like, accountability and responsibility and time management that this team alone has taught you guys, like, it's really set you up to be successful as you move forward in your lives, and as a coach, it's just so fun to watch them grow, and, you know, we have kids on the team that have been dancing their whole lives, and we have students on the team that never danced today in their life before they joined, and it's really just a joy to watch them all come together, and, yeah, accomplish some things, some amazing stuff, so we're proud of them.
And thanks for having us here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, we're gonna have a picture with you, you're gonna have to kind of crowd in and probably try to layer in, we're gonna put you behind the board back there, and then we'll have parents, and we'll be able to take pictures of you, so why don't, why don't we just follow the coaches right around that way?
Just line up, or what do we do?
Yeah, that's right, the way you're layering like that.
Two letters, two lines. We know how.
Right, front row, high ass. You're a little, I wanna be in the middle.
Well, can we get a camera for this?
Yeah, 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 I'll get you. Everyone on me, and then, yeah. Hey? Hey, on me, hey? Okay, you're all looking at me. Three, two, one, three, two, one, three, two, one. Okay? Three, two, one. Anyone else? Great. All right, good job, another round of applause. All right, a few other recognitions for the month of May, I wanna begin with the current week, we are in the midst of our, what is traditionally National Teacher Appreciation Week, in our school district, as I wrote to our staff, and oftentimes remind our community, you know, we see all of our staff as educators and teachers, and we celebrate the entire week with all of our staff members, but just heartfelt thanks and appreciation to everything that our staff puts in each and every day to our students, it's a really important profession, and I'm certainly proud to be part of this school district. Other things that are taking place, we also have National School Lunch Hero Day, which is coming up here, or we had on May 2nd, in the month of May, it's Military Appreciation Month, which ends with, well, not ends, but is celebrated also alongside Memorial Day, it's Mental Health Awareness Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, and Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, so lots to celebrate, and I know there's lots of things that will be shared out by our students coming up with their work on the 22nd, and you might hear some of it next week, when we're with our students as part of the SSA. The other announcement that I'd like to make today is that it's also School Communicators' Day coming up on May 9th, and just wanted to take a moment just to thank Mr. Henry and all that he does for our school district, I know that, you know, he's there on the weekend, last weekend for our Community Day, and the week before that was the Mepha Circus, and he's here at these meetings, always trying to get better and to tell the story in a unique and different way, whether or not those are with other publications, so, like to give you a certificate, Mr. Henry, in honor of this day and appreciation of all that you do, so, thank you, come on up. And with that, I think we're ready for public input.
Okay. Uh, we only have two people signed up for public input tonight. School board meetings are business meetings of the Mercer Island School District Board of Directors held in public. The board recognizes the value of the public being able to observe these meetings and to provide comment. Public comment is an opportunity for community members to provide input to and feedback on the work of the board and the district. It is not a time for dialogue between the board and the public, where directors do not respond directly to questions or comments posed during public comment. However, the board's statements should not be taken as agreement or disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The board may later direct the superintendent to respond to issues raised during public comment. Members of the public offering comment must adhere to the same level of stability that the board expects of itself as specified in board policies. This includes not using threatening or profane language in comments, and not directing individual attacks against staff, students, administrators, or board members. Please note that comments have the potential to violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. Comments that name or identify a district student are not permitted without permission of that student's parent or guardian. Speakers who violate any of these rules will be cut off and their speaking time ended. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to comment and additional time if using an interpreter. If you are present in person at tonight's meeting and wish to make a comment and have not yet completed a public input form, please complete the form and give it to Michelle Mueller. Blank forms are available at the entrance to the boardroom. The cutoff to register for online comment is one hour before the start of the meeting. Okay? And with that, our first speaker is Mr. Seth Lindahl.
Perjury. This is a word used when somebody makes statements in a legal situation that aren't true, it's like officially lying. Now, why would I bring this up at a school board meeting? As you go in the past, I've accused our school board president of not speaking the truth. I said she didn't speak the truth when she stated that twenty seconds were not cut out of my talk to the school board, and that we should get our facts right. This is in a letter to the editor of the Mercer Court, yet I received a letter from the superintendent's office telling me that they had made a mistake and cut twenty seconds out of my talk. When I asked President Tucker why she or any other director didn't reprimand Director Lee, she said that no social media policy existed. I stated that President Tucker sent an email that because they had no policy about social media, the board cannot respond to the anti-Semitic statements board member Lee made. She stated out loud at the end of my comments that she didn't say it. Yes, she did, in an email sent to me. Always willing to show written documents as proof to anybody that wants to see them. So why did I bring up the word perjury? Well, very, very sadly, I state that Director Lee and our school board president committed perjury. Wow, you're a gass. How would somebody make this kind of a statement publicly about two elected officials? It's easy, they lied on a report to the Mercer Island Police, taken by Officer Fan, in which they stated a number of things that I supposedly did at board meetings. These things never happened, they knew it, they were lies. Now, how do I say this so easily? Well, all you have to do is watch the recordings of the school board meetings on YouTube, you'll see that the lies that they both told to the police department to try and stop me from talking and paint me as a bad person in our community. It goes further, President Tucker went to the Bellevue District Court and tried to get an order preventing me from coming to the school board meetings for a year. She did this during the court period in the campaign for or against the school bond. Her hopes were to try to shut up a voice that speaks for many people in our community, because she didn't like that I was exposing the truth about her. Immediately after the bond failed, she withdrew, weaponizing the court, who knows that? Everybody has a reason for being on a school board. Our school board members might be the nicest people in the community, but as school board members, they are slowly driving our academic standard down, which is showing up and testing irrespective measures. You must be on the board because you're a hundred percent dedicated to making the district and the kids better. Well, I'm gonna read you President Tucker's reason for being on the school board, this is a quote, "Life goal, to stay on school board long enough to attend a Mercer Island High School graduation wearing PhD regalia." Like I told her, the school district doesn't have a policy about board members making horrible statements, I said that was pathetic. I think this kind of behavior, to silence somebody by these two members, is a horrible thing, and it's against the law, and I have her statements, and anyone that ever wants to see them, I understand, she said these, I didn't, it was provided by her, so if that's what you want.
Thank you, next we have Samantha Rubenfeld.
That's a tough one to follow up. Okay. So, first off, I wanna express my deep appreciation to our school board members for their dedicated service, thoughtful leadership, and unwavering commitment to the students, families, and staff of our district. Serving on the school board is not an easy job, it requires long hours, complex decision-making, and the ability to navigate competing priorities with integrity and vision. You are asked to make difficult choices that affect thousands of lives, not for recognition or reward, but because you believe in the power of education and the promise it holds for every student. Your work ensures that our schools are not only places of learning, but also places of safety, inclusion, opportunity, and growth. Whether it's shaping curriculum, setting policies, approving budgets, or advocating for resources, your leadership has a lasting impact on the well-being and success of our entire community. I also wanna take a moment to thank our superintendent, whose vision and daily leadership bring the board's goals to life. A strong superintendent is both a strategic partner and a steady hand, and we are so lucky to have you, and grateful for the way you champion student success, support educators, and engage our community with transparency and compassion. Your commitment to continuous improvement and equity is evident in every initiative and decision. Thanks to your supporting guidance, we've seen exceptional student achievement this year, we just saw it. I mean, academic excellence, artistic talent, athletic accomplishments, and innovation across all grade levels. From national recognition in broadcasting to championship titles and standout performances on stage, our students are thriving, and your leadership has helped make all that possible. So, to all of you, thank you for showing up, day after day, meeting after meeting, prepared, informed, and ready to listen. Thank you for your patience, your passion, and your willingness to lead during times of challenge, as well as times of celebration. Public education is the foundation of a strong, equitable society, and it's leaders like you who help keep that foundation solid. Your service matters, it matters to our teachers, it matters to our students, it matters to every family who entrusts this district with their children's future. And tonight, I wanna make sure that you know how deeply it's appreciated. Thank you. Thank you. And as co-chair of C-MIPS, an extra special, thank you for answering our nine million questions over the course of the bond campaign, and even though the vote didn't go the way we wanted it to, we'll be back for the levy next year. Thank you. That wraps up our public comment. So, since we've got the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? All in favor of approving the consent agenda as posted, please say aye, students?
Aye.
Board members?
Aye.
Aye.
That's two zero five zero. Nothing wrong with the consent agenda, superintendent reports and announcements.
Um, first off, exciting opportunity next week for us, as we have our PTA and student linkage, we spent our time yesterday with our students getting ready, I think they're ready, they're excited, they have to engage in the conversation with us next week. Do you wanna talk a little bit about format of what we're thinking again this year?
I was thinking of doing, splitting into small groups, so each of you with a group of like, three or four-ish students to talk about sort of what they've been doing this year and different things with their schools, just because it's a large group of people.
And like, it'll be like, similar to last year, so it's like, pretty informal conversation with students, and really get, getting to have like, that one-on-one time with them to kind of hear what their thoughts are.
So, that'll be next week, and then the other check-in that I kind of had for today, we have the 29th of May coming up, and that will be the study session for the budget, as well as we set aside time for, to discuss the bond and the steps forward. One of the things that we've been working on, kind of behind the scenes, is really talking to other school districts and other entities about when you don't pass a bond, what are some next steps? And so, one of those is really thinking about how do we lean into our community to determine what were those elements of the bond that people were excited about and that they supported, and which were the elements that kept voters from ultimately approving? And so, what I would like is just, I wanna make sure that I'm headed in the right direction. I thought about different ways that we could do this, we could reach out to a group such as C-MIPS, we could do a survey ourselves, or we can look at a third party. As I've talked to others around the state and with WASA, and I think about our community, I really think we probably need to partner with someone else to provide a really objec- to provide a really objective outreach into the community. So what I would like to do is at least bring to you in May, as long as I'm on the right track, some different options or ideas that I have about what that would look like in the coming months to really collect some great, both probably survey data as well as maybe some focus group data to inform some of the future decisions. But I wanted to just bring it back to you all, make sure I'm on the right track, because we're going to need to take this step together.
Can I just make a suggestion that we might consider reaching out to Lydia Muscher, who ran the superintendent search and did those really excellent focus groups, and see if that's the type of thing that she does?
Yeah.
I would recuse myself from any votes involved in her. It's because I ended up becoming friends with her after the superintendent search.
Good.
But we got such good feedback on those groups. And because of her experience during that, she really does the difference.
On the right track?
Yeah, and I think Lydia would be one option. I do think third-party makes sense. I think given the magnitude of investment, even in plans, and for capital facilities, that would be worth the investment to sort of do, you know, sort of review after the fact and sort of see, you know, where, what the path forward looks like. So yeah, I think it's a good suggestion.
Totally agree with that.
Great. Perfect. So I will keep moving forward on that. As I've had a chance to talk to different groups, and I've had some chances to speak with some community members who expressed skepticism along the way, you know, I'll continue leaning into those conversations, trying to gather as much information as I can so that we can be strategic and also get ready for February when our levy renewal will be up for the EPNO levy and the logistics on that. So those will be big lifts for you as a board and for all of us as we get ready because we'll need probably to have votes on the resolutions all wrapped up by November so we can get it on a February ballot.
But to be clear for those at home, the EPNO levy would not be for facilities because it's for operations.
Correct.
But I guess one thing to explore in the May would be if, you know, for cap tech levy, if we have to wait until the current one expires or if there's any ability to, you know, run it again while, you know, before it expires.
Great.
I guess would be one of the sort of just technical questions in terms of the options that are on the table.
You probably have Andrew's attention on that one. So yes, we can make that part of the discussion.
Another question is, I've had a number of committee, oh, could we break the original bond up into like 10 parts and run like 10 separate mini-bonds? What's, what's the overhead involved, you know, per bond? And is, does anyone ever do that respect?
Or the non-voted debt. I mean, it's very small enough. I mean, the cities do that frequently, but then it puts the board in the hot seat for making that decision without submitting it for a public vote. But, you know, taking a not unreasonable position, they were elected by the public. And if they feel, if there's enough votes, it feels that it's a reasonable proposal, and it's probably a south of 100 million, there'd be the ability to do so with 3/8 to 1% of assessed property value.
So basically, nothing's off the table. We're very interested in kind of this part of all the options.
Great. We will be prepared for that. And we will certainly, as we're talking to groups, let them know that that will be a discussion point. I know there might be people who want to either attend or at least watch your conversations. So with that, those are my main announcements.
Great. Let's leave it at that.
Since last meeting, not much has happened. Governor and President has not signed any budgets yet. So however, I think that some of you, a big review received, sorry, a letter that had been sent to the governor to veto the levy portion of the budgets that the legislator passed because it does not bring equity to the district. So that belief that we might have found might be vetoed by the governors. And I think that my side is in favor of what he wants that is vetoed of the budget. So until he signs, there's nothing to say. And I think that the only thing that happened, I think special occasion cap was listed, but I think that that might not affect us at all. So we're pretty much almost in the same boat that we were last year.
I think the breakup of the, oh, come on, you're a safety net into apportioning that throughout the year doesn't bring more money, just more predictable money. But that was the other one.
I think that everything else, I think that it is very minimal. And even if he doesn't veto, it only brings $500 extra per student. So thinking the size of our district, it's only $2 million. So it is not enough for what we actually needed and we're asking. And this is the same for each district that are on the state. So we're, that's, there's a very anticlimactic session. And yes, there's not much more to say.
Just, sorry, I forgot. I was going to pass this around. Here's the playbill from Carnegie Hall from our orchestra that I'll pass around for show with me today.
Me? Hey, you're in here. Did you play Fred and family or something?
No, me.
I did, I was at a fundraiser this morning, and I ran into one of our state senators, who said she was like, I was like, how are you? How are you? And she was like, I'm recovering. I'm exhausted.
I feel for that.
It's really.
Okay. Anything else legislative? No. Board announcements?
Well, I do, not that I interest, it's a report. It's more of when we went to Epa to visit the legislators, we didn't open the petition that as soon as they were done. We wanted to invite them to the classrooms where they actually had the opportunity to talk to teachers. And I want to see if that is an opportunity that I can extend to them maybe this school year so that we can also guide them around to the legislators. But if not soon, early in the year, so before they started legislation session to extend the dignity and have them in the classroom and then have the community gathering with districts and community members. So that's the time. So I do.
I think that'd be great. I sent them a post, you know, on the Monday after, you know, sent them a letter to all three of them and reminded them of that opportunity. So if you send them that invitation, that would be great.
Good. When we're talking about the future, I just want to say that the students did some excellent follow-up with their legislators from that trip. And I think it really makes a difference with them to sort of see that layered approach to our relationship building with the students, the board, and the administration. So.
Okay. Announcements, inquiries, and reports. Let's start with Deborah.
Hi. Just a few things. Lots of events in April. I was happy to attend the Circle of Friends Lunch Fundraiser with the SJCC, and Fred attended as well with me. It's a really great opportunity. I mean, it's a fundraiser, but it's a great opportunity to see the community come together and support, frankly, our littlest ones and our oldest ones and everything that the SJCC does for our community. Also attended the Schools Foundation Breakfast of Champions. It was very well-attended, a great fundraiser. And thrilled that, I don't know, I haven't seen like the current number, but I know have got closer to the goal than any time in my memory, so early in, right after the breakfast. So that's fantastic. And Tammy and team did some great work. I attended the Healthy Youth Community Forum put on by MIYFS. That was a great opportunity to hear from our high school students, mostly high school, some middle school, about things, how they're feeling, what they need, what they need from the adults in their life. I haven't been to one of those before, and that was a really great event. And then finally, I attended the Salad Community Day. And I don't think, I didn't see anybody there, but I know other people were there, other board directors were there. But this great event put on by a PTA committee salad led by Jesse Biagi and really fosters a, you know, sense of inclusion that we serve all students, and all students have a place in our community and a place and to be kind of the center of attention in our community and not just where we think they fit. So that was a great event with so many community partners who came and wanted to share their, the things that their different organizations can provide, bouncy houses, some good food, and other activities for the kids. So it was super fun. So thanks. That's it.
I made it to the salad event, but only at the very tail end. But it was the people that I talked to there were like, this is amazing. It's so much bigger than in past years. And like, so, you know, it was fun before.
This was only, this was only the second annual and completely grew since last year. So it was awesome.
Even the tail end was bigger than what I had seen the year before. Yeah, great. Kristina again.
So going backwards, I went to also to the Community Day and the plant sale at Crest, which is fantastic. And whoever skipped the plant sale, they should go to the next plant sale. Went to the 12 jurors play. It was really fun to watch. The breakfast, school condition breakfast. And this time, I did host the new families, but also I was seated and partnered with Realtor, and we, the group hosts will do this next year. I think the group hosts will welcome the new families. So it was great that now I will have a partnership and less pressure for me to, and for her to try to build that table. And I went to the district area to the regional meeting, the WASA, that this year was living with purpose. It was a fantastic event. I think it was great to hear from, because it's an opportunity. And this is a, directors in the region that are in the region too, what we belong. It was, this is a regional meeting, so I attended that. So for those who do not, what was the A2. So it was a way to brainstorm of great ideas and way to implement better governance process within each one of the boards. So I took it, they're going to summarize it to everybody, and I did some of the pictures of what each board is implementing. So we'll pass it along. And I think it is, it's great to see where the, where the other was with challenges and the different ideas of the different approaches of governance within our district. And then the other is that I did share with you that I will be serving as a representative of the district area two in WASA for the resolutions committee. So I will be helping, serving that for the next two years, I think, on the WASA version. And that's all my thoughts.
So I had a superintendent community advisory meeting. I think among the topics we discussed were immigration policy, funding landscape, bond. Another like topic that has sort of been a recurrent topic is e-bikes, and particularly at the middle school. And I think the general apprehension that thankfully there hasn't been that significant of an accident, at least that I'm aware of. But perhaps it's been more luck than anything. And like perhaps at some point in the future, I know we have programs that are going on in partnership with the city, but maybe even more is needed to be done. I realize it's difficult when you're talking about middle schoolers, but particularly, I think in this day and age with the speed for the bikes, there's just a lot of dangerous behavior. And it's a common, my comment that I hear from parents, and then observationally, I just see and worry.
Mr. Rill, how about the assembly?
Yeah, we had an assembly last week. It was great. You know, it's how much sticks with middle school kids, you're never sure. But hopefully it stuck with some of them. But the police were a big part of that, and it was great.
Did they talk about the classifications?
They did. They did. All the classifications of whether that pedals, didn't have pedals, what you had to be, how old you had to be, to ride certain ones at a certain speed and all that. So there's a lot of information. But the kids were very, very engaged and very attentive, as most middle school kids.
But no paralyzed people yet. I mean, in terms of like, in terms of speaking, like I actually think like on this, we might consider taking a more, you know, approach, yeah, yeah, scare straight. Like the, the, some of the accidents that can happen when one drives in an unsafe manner. Or, you know, considering if there's the will at the city and the school level, I mean, more ticketing for those kids that don't, you know, have helmets or exceeding the speed limit or otherwise, you know, navigating their e-bike in a way that endangers themselves and others.
Yeah, we have not, the, the, the vast options we're talking about.
Just like if you host a party and you give alcohol to underage, and I think eventually this will be to if parents give a e-bike to somebody that is not underage of having that, that might, they might be the one responsible, one that appears, right?
Hopefully.
Not there yet. So hopefully we will be responsible as that community team.
Yeah. Like most of us, I went to the SSA of the Community Day, which was fantastic, as previously reported. And also to the Schools Foundation Breakfast. They're such important partners with our district, the Schools Foundation, and such an important part of our enriching our everyday children's lives. And it was great to see it so well-attended and to see that it has done so well. And I also went to Ellensburg for the band solo ensemble competition. With a slightly vested interest, but I mean, over 20 students, 20-something students that who competed this year in the band solo ensemble. Percussion, large percussion, small percussion, several soloists. And Max Janes took home a second place in the state trumpet trophy, I guess. I don't know how much of a trophy there was. And our large brass group, the Trumpet Ensemble, took a third place. And our small brass group, the Trombone Quartet, took first place in the state. So we did fantastically well. Our student, our band students reflecting a lot of work and effort on their part. But it was great to see so many kids there. And the large and small percussion ensembles were really amazing. I'd never been to a percussion concert. Like that's a gap in my musical appreciation, I guess. And it was fascinating. So if there is a percussion conference, concert by the fourth of the year, I would urge people to check it out. Anything to add?
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a good news to say. So I was thinking as I read the public input script today that there's kind of a flaw in the concept here where we say, "Board directors do not respond directly to questions or comments posed during public comment." And I know that refers to like in the moment, right? It's not a back and forth. But the problem with that is if someone wants to come in here every meeting and say, you know, you know, Christina kicks puppies, right? And if she doesn't do anything to say, you know, actually, I don't kick puppies. Sorry for using. Then, you know, that's the kind of story that kind of lingers in people's minds. So I don't, I don't have a bright solution. And I know we've talked a lot this year about like, you know, do we change our policies about public comment? There are plenty of districts that say you can only address items that are on the agenda, like specific items that are on the agenda. But if we do that, we would miss out on comments about, you know, like the wonderful students who come in and share some of their, you know, schoolwork with us. Like the kids who came in and talked about the AI project that they did, right? We would miss out on teachers who are concerned about the riff, which, you know, wouldn't necessarily be on a specific agenda, right? Like I have no desire to, you know, silence people, but, but there is kind of like a problem here. Like when, it's a problem for like not just the school board, but also the city council, kind of anyone in local elected office. I think this, these last few years, like as, as we become more polarized and there's just like this level of vitriol that the internet partly enables, you know? And it kind of leaves us as public officials without a lot of opportunity to kind of like clearly clarify the public record. So today I'm using my, I'm not sure whether I'm going to make a habit out of it or not, but today I'll use my board report to just clarify a couple of things. You know, I, clearly, Mr. Lindau, I could go back and forth and back and forth. But I just wanted to clarify that when I said he did not, that I did not say those things after his comment where I said there's no social media policy. It's because he said. It's because he said something along the lines of, she said there's no social media policy, so it's fine to have like homophobic, anti-Semitic, racist, you know, board members. So that whole extended concept is what I did not say. Obviously, I did not say that. I did say there was no social media policy because there was one. And I have been working very hard the last few months to try and like work out with the board like what we wanted to put in place, if anything. And as it ends up, we are not going to be adding a social, like personal social media policy. But it's not for lack of like looking into it. The comment about the PhD regalia is taken wildly out of context because I got accepted to a PhD program last year and very excited. I texted one of my board colleagues and said, hey, I got into my PhD program. Super exciting. And then I was like, new life goal, you know, stay on the board long enough so that I can hand out diplomas once wearing my PhD regalia. That's not likely to happen because my program's a five-year program. But it's like taking that moment of like joy and enthusiasm, pulling it out of context and saying, this is why Maggie Tiede is on the board. Like this is why she ran for board. Well, that's a comment that I made last year, and I've been on the board since 2019. Just this kind of like constant like drumbeat of sort of distortion, thinking like something that sounds like a fact and then making it sound about 20 times worse, right? It's hard as a public official to like sit there and just have to listen to it, you know? And then finally, I would just say it's true that I did file for an anti-harassment order against Mr. Lindau, but I later decided to withdraw it. But at no point was I attempting to silence him or not allow him to attend public meetings by Zoom or take part in public comment by Zoom. I would just say that if you run a security company and women are like uncomfortable with your presence and your aggression towards them and threats to like expose personal facts about them, you should take a really good look at yourself. On that happy note, I'm about ready to be done with this meeting. I think this is a record. We are done at 6:52. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor of adjourned? Say aye, students. Board members.
Aye.
Zero five zero. Thank you so much, everyone.